Good evening, it's seven o'clock, I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Mitchellville City Council to order. Roll call please.
Hoover.
Here.
Willamette.
Here.
Waller.
Yes.
Roberts.
Here.
Calmen.
Here.
Mayor Murrum.
Here.
Please stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to approve the tentative agenda?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Calmen.
Yes.
Waller.
Yes.
Willamette.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Hoover. Yes.
Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Any discussion? Roll call?
Willamette.
Yes.
Calmen.
Yes.
Waller.
Yes.
Hoover. Yes. Roberts.
Yes.
Is there any one in the audience that would like to address the council? Joe?
Joe Crook, 208 Sixth Street Northeast, right here in Mitchellville. Uh, I just came from Sharon's, I've been a friend of her family's for nineteen eighty-nine. She's working on, David Dory's gonna cap the plumbing, Person's got the contract to do the cleanup, she needs a building permit, and I'm asking the council if they would waive the building permit fee. She wants to get it torn down, she's willing to pay the fee, but Sharon's pinching pennies while she can. Don't know how much the building's being, how much?
It's only fifty for a demo.
Only fifty? Uh, if you, she'll, she'll get it court, court.
Wait a minute, demo or building permit?
A demo permit is what they're referring to currently.
Yeah, yeah, a demo permit. So, I, I told her I'd come up and talk to the council. Uh, the insurance company has somebody who's gonna tear it down, they're gonna start on it as soon as the building permit gets issued. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe, thank you. And will you ask, Elaine?
Hi, my name's Elaine Webb, I live at three oh one Third Street Northeast, Mitchellville. I have a, a concern with a couple people. Uh, Bill Roberts and Tammy Delabou, meeting before hours of work and after hours of work coming into City Hall, and I have to know.
I'm gonna cut you off right there to respond about that part. There is nothing that says they can't meet, and that she can't open the doors early or stay late. Tammy is not on the council, there's no violation of open records, and that's absolutely allowed.
Okay, and after hours too?
Yes, if they need to use the city hall to meet about something that pertains to the city, I allow it, I meet up here after hours frequently.
Okay, that's fine, I just wanna know what's, you know, why they can't meet during regular hours?
Cause they both have, she has her job here and he has a different full-time job.
Okay, that's fine.
Can I ask when this was?
Just last week, um, was it Thursday or Friday last week?
Friday, when I was off work in the afternoon.
I just, I just wanted to bring it up here, that's all.
During, during regular hours.
I just, that was before.
After a fire call.
Anybody else in the public? Chrissy?
Thursday, or Friday?
Hi, I'm Chrissy Bowers, three thirteen Third Street Northwest. Um, I just kinda wanna talk about the internet, or just my, my feelings. I mean, I probably don't know everything that it has to do, but I would watch the video. Anyways, um, some points I'd like you guys to consider. You said it's very successful in military places. They're also managed by the government. I wonder who's going to be maintaining this? And when the fellow from, um, Spectre, Spectre stated that he, it could be seventy to thirty was his example, but it could be a lot different if he, how much management they have on it. So the price could be a lot more, you know, you don't know. And I felt like a lot of the information, my perception of the information, was, there was a lot of, um, there wasn't much hard evidence, because if they done W. Other towns have done it, but this company has no record. When Nedra asked them where, what cities are they in? He said, um, his exact quote, "We had nobody built out yet." I feel that you guys should have said at that time, "Thank you for your time, when you get somebody, come back." Somebody also said, "Well, this is cutting edge." I don't think Mitchellville is physically or financially set up to do that. We couldn't give a guy three dollars an hour raise last fall, so you had a lost city worker. And maybe this is a different bucket, but as a resident, it's not free. Just because I can use a wifi at the library, or you guys put up towers and we can use them in our homes, somebody's paying it. And to get three hundred and fifteen to a million dollars back annually, if I understood the guy's projected and, you know, BS in my opinion, his numbers, because he's gonna pay that however. I just didn't, I don't, I don't understand it. So I hope that you guys carefully can really consider this, because I think it's, it's not a cash cow, you're an opinionist, I don't think, in my opinion, not that I know much. And then the storm attitude, you brought that up too. If this, they said, "We'll get crews like Mid-American," who's their crews? They've never done it before. So, I, I just hope you guys, I know you all are very smart, we voted for you, you're in here for a reason, but I hope you really consider all of these, because none of those addressed. And then what is the speed? He didn't talk about the speed. So, I hope you guys think about all of that. And I have one more really good point, but I was trying to do it in three minutes. Oh, he said that the revenue generated is going to be twenty-five percent of this, and I think the city, the townspeople need to hear this, because when you're hearing it, you really need to pay attention. How's the revenue generated? He said twenty-five percent of it depends on getting the information by, in my words, poaching off cars, traffic, uh, their data, dragging pass on the interstate, which he admitted was not worth much, maybe a penny a car, and so he threw out another number, that, um, maybe two hundred and twenty thousand dollars a month, or, I, I, again, I don't know if it's not clear or annually or whatever. But the other seventy-five percent of the revenue falls into little bit more intangible, and it's going to take more testing. So, in my mind, when I heard that, I thought, "He doesn't, he doesn't know." Well, I went and Googled it, so I'd make sure I was right. When you Google that, it is meaning, this is a difficult or impossible to define and understand. It's vague and abstract per, so he doesn't know either. So I hope you guys really think about that. And I'm sure they're very nice people, but a million dollars is a lot of money, having a contract, you know, to me, it, it's not worth it, but that's why I did it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chrissy. Sir in the back? You state your name and address first.
Yeah, um, I know somebody who votes, uh, Jerry Weeks, live at six hundred Jasper Avenue Northeast, here in Mitchellville. I've lived here probably about thirty-eight years. I find that interesting about this wifi type thing, um, I don't really know much about it, but I'm gonna look into it. If, as a private citizen, I personally don't think, uh, the city or us private citizens should pay for some any type of internet or wireless system, from what I'm hearing, I've just talked to a few people today. Uh, the main reason I'm here is line item number eleven, ordinance one, two thousand twenty-two, amending chapter fifty-five point oh five, um, of Mitchellville City Code to include a section on poultry. I don't know what that, how that's written, but in my eyes, I think it could be broad enough that a pet is a pet, and livestock is livestock. So what I deem as a pet, is a pet. And I think you need to consider that anybody has a right on their own private property to have whatever they deem as a pet, if it's not a harm to society. And what is livestock, I consider cattle, beef, poultry, and, uh, you know, we eat those, uh, that's what farmers are for. So, if I wish to have an elephant, that might be a little bit different. You know, that elephant's might run over somebody, kill somebody, or the lion I keep in my basement, you know, when I take it outside, that could be a hazard to society. Primary reason I'm here to advocate for my neighbor that would like to have, uh, a miniature horse. I've lived there for thirty-eight years, and if she had that horse, I probably would never even know it. So, that's all I have to say. I think, I'd ask, just look at that code, see how it's written, so, thanks for your time.
Thanks too.
I'm Terry Weeks, Jerry's wife, and I live at six hundred Jasper Northeast, Mitchellville, Iowa. And Nick, you were on the Little League team, and I was the dugout mom, years and years, many years ago. Mason is still doing good, and, anyway, um, the reason I'm here is also for my neighbor, Wendy. Um, you know, we've had neighbors in, next door to us, we had several neighbors so far, in the whole time I've been here, and I've been in Mitchellville for thirty years as well, um, and been married to Jerry for twenty-four, so, um, they had Great Danes in that house, they had chickens that have been running up and down the road, we've had guinea hens running up and down the road and coming into our yards, we have turkeys that come into our yard, and I don't see why she cannot have a miniature horse. That little horse is no bigger than a Great Dane. And I've seen some dogs, we've got a big German Shepherd down the street, that's bigger than, almost as big as that horse is. A black German Shepherd, it's a pup, but it's huge. And, you know, if you're gonna start putting limits on people and what kind of pets they can have, then I don't know that I'm gonna live in this town anymore. You know, I've contributed to this town financially, I haven't been to the council meetings, but I damn well am gonna start, because I do not like the way you guys are running things. I think that you're being stubborn, pig-headed, and you're not being Christian at all. And I know some of you probably still go to church, but you don't practice the way Christ would, would treat his community. And I don't think that being the way you're being about this miniature horse situation is a very Christian-like behavior. And I am embarrassed to call all of you members of this council. And if I could change it today, I would. And I may go over your heads and go further on if I have to. Because I do have a voice, and I have a loud voice, and I will speak up, and I'll speak up loudly. I might even go on the internet and start saying some things if I have to. Because I think it's wrong, I think what you're doing is wrong. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anybody else like to address the council at this time? Wendy?
Hi, I'm Wendy. Five oh five, six three Northeast, um, I just wanted to do, uh, kind of address the amendment number eleven that we're talking about here. Um, I was told that one of the reasons not to have livestock was that there could be a change of neighbors in the time that I would have this, and this horse has a good ten years left on him, well, chickens and roosters live five to ten years, so, it's really no different, livestock is livestock, animals are animals. I mean, if, if you're gonna justify it as livestock, um, the Iowa Code defines livestock as an animal belonging to the bovine, capri, equine, ovine, or porcupine species, ostriches, rare, emus, farm deer, or poultry. That's under the Iowa Code, so. A pig is a pig, a horse is a horse, chicken is a chicken. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience? Yes.
Denny Eastridge, fifth in center. I want to commend you guys for upholding the code on livestock. If people wanna have livestock, give it an acreage. Uh, the thing is, some people like chickens, some people regret the chickens, you don't even know they have them. Other people, they're out on the road, they get run over by bulldozers, um, the whole thing, you just don't, you can make an exception for a small horse, or whatever, the next thing, that horse, the next horse they're gonna want is six inches taller, and pretty soon, you know. There's a reason why there's laws in towns that against livestock, it's town. You know, if you wanna have livestock, move the country.
We've got cows right up the road.
Hey, the cows have been there forever.
Yeah.
This is his time, not yours.
It's grandfathered in, that's the law too, so, all I'm saying.
Thank you, Dan. Anybody else? Moving on. Eric.
All right.
You ready?
Yep.
You practiced?
Sometimes I give. We hired Officer Kloster helping with this.
Um, so it's September twentieth, my birthday.
Uh, he had finally achieved his ID certification as a police officer, so with that, he would like to be sworn in, um, with the city. You probably saw a couple of his posts, Officer Kloster is our main guy for the, uh, Amazon grant, which is, um, it's gonna be a reason. So, I'll just have to look over here, all right? You ready?
Yep.
I state your name.
I, Sean Kloster.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
Will support the Constitution.
The United States.
The United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
The State of Iowa.
Of the State of Iowa.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
Of the City of Mitchellville.
Of the City of Mitchellville.
Iowa.
Iowa.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Faithfully.
Faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
Discharge all the duties.
Discharge all of my duties.
Of the office of police officer.
Of the office of police officer.
In the City of Mitchellville.
In the City of Mitchellville.
Iowa.
Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Now, here, after, something like.
As now or hereafter?
As now and hereafter.
Required by law.
Required by law.
The next item on the agenda is Consider For Approval Resolution twenty-two, Tac nineteen. It's approving the P and Z recommendation for the plot of land survey by Landis Cooperative. Do you have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Did you guys have anything you'd like to say?
Sorry, uh, Steve Nielsen, General Counsel for Landis Cooperative, Dale Vincent here, who's our capital projects lead, you want to address any names or? We learned that after P and Z, that perhaps, um, some folks that are wanting us to come, so we were asked to come tonight. We're here to answer any questions you may have, uh, from anyone about the plans, uh, on the other side of the interstate, so, that's who we are. Dale's the guy who can answer all the detailed questions, I'm just a dumb lawyer, okay? So, uh, but if anyone has any questions, we'd be happy to entertain.
Did you wanna tell us what you're gonna build?
I did, I absolutely can. I think, no. Um, on the map here, uh, we purchased thirty acres from Iowa Kentucky Farms, uh, just northwest of the, uh, interchange of the interstate. Uh, kind of some of the major highlights, out here on this end, there's gonna be three point eight million bushels of corn storage. Uh, the large bend here in the center will be for one point two million bushels of soybeans. Uh, three hundred and fifty thousand bushels of wet corn storage, and a hundred and fifty thousand bushels of wet beans. Uh, not able to be seen on this, there's two small, there's two dryers here. One will be located from the facility where that we're, uh, removing out of, uh, Monteran Isle, it'll be relocated in site, and the other one will be brand new. There will be the ability to receive forty thousand bushels an hour of grain, uh, harvest, uh, coming across two scales on the property, one inbound, one outbound. In addition, uh, we'll have dry fertilizer, uh, none of the ones that scare everybody on the news, we don't like those either, so it'll be the common ones that you see out in the, uh, marketplace, MAP, DAB, POTS, three various ingredients, um, all managed, uh, we're going through Polk County Engineering, um, provided all the SDS sheets for that, uh, to, uh, for the facility. Liquid fertilizer, uh, will be thirty-two, and then the chemicals that go with maintaining weeks for our farmers. In the center of the facility, there will be an office, and then we will have, uh, this is the septic bed here, and then there will be a wastewater containment pond, I shouldn't say wastewater, stormwater, uh, for the property. So we'll maintain water on our property, uh, the release of this thirty acres is predicted to be lower than what we're replacing on the property for the engineers managing our stormwater permits.
Price tag so far, in case you're interested, is north of thirty-seven million dollars for what you see there. And, uh, in this day and age, it goes up every day, right, with just getting materials, so, this is a, a major site for us, we're very excited about it, the Board of Directors is excited about it, the President's excited. We had to close down Altoona and Monteran, we're in the process of doing those, um, this is a great site for us, so we appreciate, um, the citizens of Mitchellville and the council, yes?
I have one question. Um, normally you see co-ops on the railway, why is this one not looking for a rail in?
Great question, um, we actually talked to Mr. Craig about that parcel that you all have over there, but it's involved a little bit of litigation, I understand, so. Um, but we have Pleasant Hill, which is on the rail, and so, um, as we did the feasibility studies, we decided with trucking on the major interstates, you can get from here to Pleasant Hill in a very short time, and, um, rail wasn't absolutely necessary. We, we loved to build on rail, but, um, we just couldn't find a parcel that fit our needs and is close enough to Monteran and Altoona, but far enough away that hopefully urban creep, I guess that's the problem we had, you know, in Monteran, right in the middle of town, Altoona, I grew up in Altoona, and so, um, it's kinda hard to take a semi around, roundabout, to where we are in Altoona, so, that's the problem we had there, so, good question.
Thank you.
Anything else? Yes, sir?
You guys gonna have, uh, LPs, like, refilled LP tags?
Uh, that is not part of the plan at this point in time, Landis as a whole does not deal in fuel, we're just not good at it. We're a grain and a dry in the company.
Any hydrants?
There will be hydrants on the property, um, I failed to note that, I apologize for that, it wasn't on the drawing, keep up. There will be a bullet out in this area, there'll be a brand new bullet purchase for the property.
So we're essentially, I'm sorry.
What's that?
Fire department.
Fire department, yep. Hey, I will be getting ahold of you guys in the very near future, as we move through it, to go through the property, make sure you understand the risk and, uh, what kind of response that we would hope to see from you guys on different activities that would occur.
I may have missed this, but exactly where is this located? I think I know.
Um, one hundred and twelfth, right?
Yeah, so you go to the intersection of one hundred and twelfth and seventieth, so on this board, uh, right here, this would be the interstate, uh, and the interchange. You go north one mile to the intersection, and then west three quarters.
So you're north of the interstate?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Have at it. Kind of due north of the rest area, isn't it?
It is.
Straight due north of that sign up.
And the hydrants, just on that topic, so we have a facility in Monteran today that's surrounded by houses, and it's not a good situation, so. From the county's perspective, we're not, it's not a add-one, it's a, it's a net zero, we're removing that, we'll add it here, so.
And the house is on that property right now?
That's a rental home, yes, that's owned by the, the owner of the property, so.
Yeah, so we're taking the north, we're taking the northwest thirty acres.
Right.
And that house is out, out here in that corner.
That's a hundred and sixty-two acres, and we're as far away as we could get from that house, which we did on purpose for that, for that reason, so. Anything else? Yes, sir?
Does Mitchellville collect taxes on that property?
No.
That's a better question for them.
It's outside city limits, but it's within two miles, so we do get to have a say, that's why it's before us.
We'll have ten to twelve people in the winter, so hopefully they'll buy gas and, you know, lunch and whatever else in town here.
Yeah, bring traffic down here.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call?
Hoover.
Yes.
Willamette.
Yes.
Waller.
Yes.
Calmen.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Next, we have the resolution approving the plot of survey for the mod property. Do I have a motion to approve?
Oh, yeah.
Second. Any discussion on that one? Roll call?
Roberts.
Yes.
Waller.
Yes.
Willamette.
Yes.
Calmen.
Yes.
Hoover.
Yes.
Next is the resolution approving the transferring of funds from the investment IP AIT Super Cap Project Fund to Legacy Bank. Tammy, if you wanna?
Yeah, if you remember, when we bonded out for the, uh, phase two of the water project, we got one point eight million, and that was a little more than Legacy wanted deposited in their accounts. So we split it and put a million in our investment account with IPAD, and, um, the other half was in Legacy. And now we're getting up to our last payments, we took out five hundred thousand last fall, and now we now have got another five hundred thousand left to bring back. back to Legacy Bank now. So that's all it is, is transferring funds from our investment into Legacy to pay off the last of the project.
Thanks. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call?
Calman?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Willamette?
Yes.
Hoover?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Next is the resolution approving the pay rates for the employees. We already approved that during the budget, we just have to do this resolution separately.
Calman.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Willamette?
Yes.
Calman?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Hoover?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Next is a resolution adding a second petty cash account. Do I have a motion to approve?
Calman.
Second.
Any discussion on that?
So who's gonna be in charge of this?
The Kansas City Hall, so it'll be just like our own petty cash. It's just going to ease up when we need to have a change bank for the Parks and Rec events, when we have to have prize money for the leagues. Sometimes with having the time when we can get checks out of here, it's a little hard. And then, once the petty cash needs replenished, we will be putting it before you guys as an expense, so you'll see it on your expense list. It'll be audited regularly, yeah.
Any other discussion? Roll call?
Roberts?
Yes.
Hoover?
Yes.
Willamette?
Yes.
Calman?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Our next item is the approval of ordinance one, Tac 2022. It's an amending chapter 55.5 of Visual City Code to include a section on poultry. So in 2013, we passed the section that's been included, we repass it, but when it got recodified in 2019, that did not get included. So we need to repass it now if we'd like to get it included.
So right now, we're not supposed to have livestock in the city?
Right now, for our code, poultry is considered livestock and not allowed. In 2013, that council had taken poultry out of the livestock category and allowed poultry following the rules listed there. So yeah, technically, right now, it's not for our code that you can have poultry in town.
It was approved that it would be, but it never got codified.
And it's worked well through the last nine years, hasn't it? With six chickens, there are less no roosters.
There's been a few instances of chickens running in town and with all and overall, yeah. In my time, we've been pretty strict about the fact that you need to have a fenced-in backyard, you need to have a coop. So that really, in my time, I, almost eight years here, and we've not really had chickens run wild because of those restrictions. They are supposed to have them registered with the city, which tends to be a bigger issue. I mean, we don't charge a fee, so they're not out or in if we don't register them. But the only issue we've ever had is when they get baby chickens, and sometimes they turn into a rooster, and then they gotta go.
My thing is, it looks like it could potentially look like it's showing favoritism about chickens, but we're not gonna mention horses or pigs or what have you, you know, livestock is livestock, as Danny mentioned, and so. Can I, like, bring up? I think we oughta not change it for six months and see where the bird flu thing goes.
See where the bird goes?
Bird flu, bird flu's in Iowa, it's in major commercial areas, kind of in western Iowa.
They said five today on the cloud.
And that'd be my point.
We'll send more accounting now.
So if you, if we don't choose to re-implement this, like Nick said, it was implemented in 2013, it was missed during the codification process, which there's thousands of pages in your ordinance book, so I don't fault anybody. If we do not start the approval process of this, every single person that has chickens needs to get rid of them immediately. You wanna go to the front door and be the guy you are hired?
Do I have a motion either way?
I was gonna say, have we had a motion at all?
Nope. I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
So we're just want to know we're approving?
Exactly as a reading.
The first reading. This is an ordinance, so it takes three readings.
Do we have a motion? Second. Is there any further discussion? Roll call?
Lawler?
No.
Hoover?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Calman?
No.
Willamette?
Yes.
Our next item is an ordinance approving the solid waste fees. Those got increased by Metro Waste, and this reflects that.
Who do we approve?
One second. Any discussion? Roll call?
Willamette?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Calman?
Yes.
Hoover?
Yes.
Next is the same thing, ordinance three, but Tac 22, but for recyclables. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call?
Lawler?
Yes.
Calman?
Yes.
Willamette?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Hoover?
Yes.
Next, we have Consider For Approval Letter of Intent to Sector Technology Group and Wireless Guardian Regarding the Smart City Solution and Wi-Fi Monetization.
And that didn't go well on the screen, but there's a little map. This was put on so you guys can decide if we want to take any next steps or what, because after last Monday night's meeting, it was kind of left up in the air on what direction you want to go. So you guys can act on it, you can not act on it, you can say you want more info, you can say you want them to come back, you can let me know what you want to do, or we just drop it.
My opinion at this time is I don't think we're ready to sign a letter of intent, especially one with a twenty-year contract. I think if they have fourteen people that are already on a letter of intent, and they say it takes sixty days to stand up, why not wait till they stand one up? I don't think we should move forward with this at this time, when there's plenty of already moving parts, and we can do it then.
I believe we need to consider more discussion and knowledge about it, definitely.
Agreed.
I still want to go to a place and just set my computer up.
According to their timeline, in a couple months, you can do that.
Okay. Let's bring them back.
Get that somewhere else before we do it here.
Let's bring them back in three months, see where they're at.
That sounds good to me. Uh, next is updates from department heads. Derek? I always put you on first, though.
It's all good.
Usually it's Derek's on the outside.
I wanted to see the, uh, the deal for the other side of the road there. All right, so far, fifteen reports for March, sixteen traffic stops, been a low month, but that's okay. Ben's still doing very well at the academy. This week, I'm in crime scene investigation school. That's, uh, that's gonna be a fun one. I'll just leave it at that. And then, as I had mentioned earlier, Officer Kloster hooked us up with the Amazon grant. We pushed out something, so if a family's in need, you know, kind of looking for something, email him, he's the point of contact on that. We are into the trial period with them right now, and hopefully it'll become a permanent thing. The only issue I'm going to see is we're gonna run out of storage pretty quickly, because we already got the manifest for tomorrow's delivery and lousy. So if you need something, email him, so he can get it out of my office. But outside of that, we're, we're day in, day out business.
Thank you. Matt?
All right, I'm gonna pretend I'm Mike Toohey for a second. He's not able to be with us tonight, but he wanted me to give a fire department update. Sixty-five calls for service so far for the year. Uh, we still have three folks in fire school. They're doing really well. They've been coming back from class, and when we do our Sunday training, we've been going over some of the things that they've been learning, just to refresh everybody and help them practice their skills, so we're all, we're all enjoying that process. We have voted in another new member. They'll be coming in front of the council on the consent agenda for next time, once I get that through Tammy. But look for more from that. We've had a lot of interest in our fire department lately, a lot, a lot of new people coming up, and we're always taking more, so if you guys know anybody that is interested, if anybody out there is interested, come and see me, come and see Mike, come up to City Hall, we got applications up here, we can always use some help. So, that's the fire department. Parks and Rec. So, Parks and Rec, we've been working really hard, as weather permits, to get the Parks Cemetery and the Killinger already to go for the summer season. Every time we get all the sticks bunched up and piled up, we get a storm and we get some more sticks down, so Lane's been running around picking up sticks like a madman. We're working on some leaves today, but so far, so good. We're making good progress up there, so they can look really nice. We got a Parks and Rec Commission meeting tomorrow night. Uh, we will be discussing, in particular, the Killinger Park project, which I'm really excited about moving forward with. So lots of, lots of fun stuff to talk about. I have a little packet put together for them with proposed shelter upgrades, picnic tables, garbage cans, flower beds, et cetera, et cetera. So looking forward to moving on with that project, and other than that. Is this as usual?
Ronnie?
Um, I've been, I sent out all of the notices for everybody in 2022. I was talking to Jason with IO inspections, and he would really like us to bunch as many rental inspection researchs as possible, so I went ahead and pulled everybody due in 2022 and mailed out their letters today. They could do them earlier or whatever, so there's a lot of people that have gotten letters from us. I do want to touch on this month's water bill. We added the brick that the park and rec has, that was in the second page with the water bill. There's been a lot of confusion. You are not required to buy a brick. You are not paving Second Street with bricks. You are not going to get shut off if you don't buy a brick. Uh, today was interesting. This is simply raise money for the park. It's gonna be a path in the park. Matt put in a really nice flower garden that includes butterflies, and so those bricks will kind of line that way. Do it for a memorial, do it, you know, for your family, whatever, your team, whatever, but it is not required. Other than that.
Adam? I missed you guys back there.
Oh. Hope you wouldn't notice. So right now, we're getting the roads hatched out, and we're looking into getting all the main breaks filled in, the roads. Middle of April, we're looking at flushing all the fire hydrants as well. That's pretty much it.
Phil?
Last week, I attended the Metro Waste Alerting Meeting, and.
So, Lawler?
No news.
Nick?
I'm just sick of the last person.
Will?
Okay.
Brett?[1687.65]